In order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the school board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Second, Ralston, seconds.
Thank you.
Discussion, please vote.
Vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.23-3711, that the school board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss, consider the assignment, appointment, performance, displaning, and resignation of specific employees and pointy officers of our school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and A2 to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A2 and A3 to consult with legal counsel regarding legal matters and actual probable litigation under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 and A8. And four, to discuss with staff and legal counsel to disposition of school property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiated strategy of bargaining, positioning of our school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A3 and A8.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Discussion, please vote.
Vote is six yes, two absent, motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session, return in open session approximately one hour, thank you. I'm just getting ready for... The Prince William County School Board is now returning to open session from closed session. We do not have any action items from closed session, so we will move to A-01, approval of the closed session consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Any seconds?
Mr. Chairman.
Ralston, seconds. Discussion, please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting on November 19, 2019, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that this school board hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Second.
Second, Ms. Ralston, discussion, please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Thank you. This is the part of the meeting where we talk about positively Prince William County Schools or positively PWCS. It highlights, this is how we're kicking off our meetings this year, and right now we're going to highlight the only school in Virginia named a Microsoft showcase school. Superintendent Dr. Walz, please introduce the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, members of the board. Kyle Wilson Elementary School is one of only 40 schools in the entire United States and only 366 in the entire world recognized as a Microsoft showcase school. Gretchen Dofutsky, principal, will share more about this prestigious honor.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, for inviting us, Chairman Latif, school board, Dr. Walz. We're so honored to be here. I'd like to introduce my team tonight. I've got Deanna Livy and George Wright, my assistant principals, Sammy Sagai and Robbie Miller, our technology coaches. I've got Dr. Melissa Edmonds, as well as Camden Kapoca and Michaela Jones joining me. So as we opened Kyle Wilson just four years ago, we saw a vision of using technology to provide instructional opportunities to students in new and innovative ways. Our staff embraced this commitment and last year ensured our success by supporting each other to all become Microsoft innovative educators. In addition, we had at least one representative from each grade level obtain Microsoft trainer certification and four teachers be named Microsoft expert educators. This requires an extensive amount of time above and beyond their regular school day, and they did this because of their independent passion and commitment to excellence. Through the Microsoft community, we were all able to deepen our understanding of resources, tools, and interactive experiences available through Microsoft that supports the preparation to raise 21st century learners. We learned this summer that we were named the first and only Microsoft showcase school in the state of Virginia and one of two schools within our five state district as determined by Microsoft. This distinction has affirmed our work for innovative learning and continued to push us forward in utilizing devices as tools and no longer digital worksheets. We have begun the process to use a rubric that assists in the evaluation of technological resources as a way to gauge the effectiveness and rigor that it may provide for our students. In addition, our students have had opportunities to experience using Flipgrid, Flippals, which is essentially digital pen pals from around the world, Legos in education, virtual field trips and interviews with educators from around the world. Our teachers utilize OneNote to organize tasks for students, differentiate, provide feedback in real time, and a collaboration space for students to develop presentations and movies about their own learning.
Please take the next few minutes to hear from some of our scholars. Roll that tape.
All right, could you play our video, please?
Good evening, Wilson sea lion friends.
I'm Sienna Thompson.
And I'm Savannah Warman.
And we are breaking away from our daily news show for a special report.
As you may know, we have been selected as a Microsoft showcase school. We use technology tools to learn every day with Microsoft Teams, OneNote, Skype, Sway, Flipgrid, and so much more.
Let's go see what's going on with our special reporters, Michaela and Camden. They're out in their classrooms right now.
Thank you, Sienna.
Hi, I'm Camden, and I'm here at Kyle Wilson with Sam, who is in second grade. Thanks for doing this interview, Sam.
Welcome.
How long have you been using technology, Sam?
I've been using technology for Patrick for my whole life.
Wow, that's amazing. How long have you been using technology at our school?
I've been using technology at Kyle Wilson since kindergarten.
Wow. What kinds of technology have you used?
I've used Kindles, Smart Tables, and now I have my own laptop.
Hi, I'm Michaela with the special news report. We're in fifth grade, Miss Hughes' class with...
I'm Anya.
How do you use technology every day, Anya?
Um, I use it for OneNote. It really helps me stay organized and see what I need to do. Thank you.
Do you want to tell us about how you use technology in this class?
Hmm, I would love to. So, we use our technology. We use on a computer, we do Flipgrid, and we did a book report.
That's amazing. Um, I heard you did a Skype with a man in El Salvador, how did that go?
That was good. We talked to someone about El Salvador, and he tells us lots of facts.
Cool, that's amazing. We have another one here, how do you use Flipgrid?
To do book reports and other stuff in our classroom about learning and the stuff we've learned in my class.
What did you think about the Skype?
It was great, because I learned a lot of stuff I didn't know about El Salvador.
Cool, thanks for sharing.
Hi again, I'm back in fourth grade with Teddy.
This is a MergeCube, and there's this app where like you can go on here and you could search up different planets. Like if you want to learn about the Earth, you can go on the island, search up all these things, and then you could like flip around it, and then you could search up other different planets.
Thanks for sharing, Teddy.
You're welcome.
Wow, those were some really cool ways that we use technology.
And the MergeCube that came to life was pretty cool, too.
Yeah, and Skype for virtual field trips can be lots of fun.
I have to agree with Anya. Using OneNote and Microsoft Teams keeps me organized, too.
Well, that wraps up our news report today. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Deutch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to everyone at Kyle Wilson. It's always exciting to see everything that y'all are doing. Congratulations on starting your journalistic endeavors and enjoying practicing your reporting skills, and keep up the great work. Thanks for everything y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Jesse. I think that today's show is looking for you guys. You, that's just awesome, and it just took me back to elementary kids. Isn't it wonderful? I just love looking at what, and watching kids show how talented they are, and you guys have what they call presence. You've got it. Thank you for sharing tonight, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to call the meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. Reverend Carl Brower of the First Mount Zion Baptist Church in Dumfries will give the invocation at the request of Lily Jessie of the Okaquan District. Mr. Brower?
Good evening. Bring you greetings from First Mount Zion family, the Prince William County NAACP, to the leadership of the Prince William County School System, Dr. Latif, the school board members, my favorite school board members, Ms. Jessie, the administrators, and the family of Prince William County. Please join me in prayer. First, Father God, we give you thanks for the blessing experienced by the Kyle Wilson School and the improvements that they're making and the journey that they're on, but at this time, we're asking for your, and seeking your anointing, for the Spirit of God upon the leadership of this Prince William County School System and these elected officials, that you would sharpen their minds, give them discernment, to be diligent to hear the concerns of the community, to be determined to set policies and priorities that will enable greater equity and a foundation for higher achievement for all the children in the Prince William County family. We pray even this evening for this meeting, decisions that will be made that will further one Prince William County ethos, from Gainesville to Woodbridge, from Brentsville to Okaquan, one Prince William County of academic achievement and opportunity for all of our children. This is our prayer, and everybody in agreement should say, amen.
Amen. Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance, thank you, Mr. Brower. Next, we'll have the pledge of allegiance. If the students would like to step up to the microphone to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please tell us your name and your school before...
I'm Emily Jabutsky.
I'm Alex Jabutsky.
I'm Camden Kapoca.
And I'm Michaela Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I'll take one quick moment here before we go on to the meeting. I'd like to introduce our new school board member, who is our student member, just appointed, Mr. Ben Kim of Stonewall Jackson High School, junior, correct?
Yeah.
Junior at Stonewall Jackson High School. He will be representing the students this year along with another student who will be alternating and will be leading our new student senate that we have created, which will have representatives from all the high schools to help our student board rep communicate their concerns to the school board and to the wider, broader community. Can we have a round of applause for Mr. Ben Kim? Next, we'll move on to the approval of the public meeting agenda, a motion is in order. Mr. Wilk?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the school board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'm second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Next, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the school board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Chairman.
Ms. Ralston, seconds. Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is eight yes unanimous, motion passed.
Excellent. Well, this came up quick. During this time on the agenda, the student representative will speak and have an opportunity to address himself and their interest. Mr. Ben Kim, Stonewall Jackson High School.
Hi, it's nice to be here today. My name's Ben Kim. It's really easy to pronounce, it's really easy to spell. I'm a junior at Stonewall Jackson High School. I applied for this position because I took a government class, and it really opened my eyes and saw me see how like policy works and those types of things a little bit differently, and I had a lot of ideas, and I felt like I could bring something to the school board to help address some of these things and make Prince William County the greatest county.
Outstanding. Thank you, sir. Moving on to citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items, it looks like we have close to probably about 17 or 18 folks here. We will, they will all have a chance to speak, they will have three minutes of speaking, the clerk will keep time, the lights on the monitor will indicate their progress, yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position, red indicates your time is up and should stop. Please use proper decorum manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you approach the podium. I'll call up the first 10 names if you guys want to grab seats at the front, or you can stay where you are. Kristi Wyatt, Jalen Wyatt, Anita Cooper, Riley O'Casey, Brandon Holland, Ashley Bush, Jennifer Gilly, Asher McDuffie, Swannell Wiggins, and Richard Jessie. Kristi Wyatt.
Good afternoon, school board members and fellow citizens. I'm here before you to speak against the superintendent for high school because he just hasn't been doing his job, and I will be here every school board meeting until things are resolved. So, let's get started with today's topic of discussion. Mr. Mulgrew, he needs to leave, okay? Enough is enough is enough. He needs to leave. He's not the manager that he needs to be. He has principals and their staff members not doing their job. They don't have to do their job because they know that he's not going to require them to do their jobs, okay? So, I scheduled a meeting with him, he doesn't want to meet with me. I scheduled a meeting with the deputy superintendent and the superintendent of school systems, they don't want to meet with me. Their gatekeepers send me back to the person that's the problem, and that's Mr. Mulgrew. So, let's talk about this one issue. I was here last school board meeting, and we had a briefing that was basically a dog and pony show about a strategic plan, okay? To close the educational gap with minorities. Well, school board members, how are we going to close that minority gap when you have administrators, the best counselor in a school, to put kids in classes out of sequence? And the response to me was, we do it all the time. We always put kids in classes out of sequence. Well, I'm sorry, just because you do it all the time doesn't mean it's right. There's a reason why Algebra I comes before Algebra II. There's a reason why ninth grade and 10th grade English comes before 12th grade English. There's a reason why 11th grade history comes before 12th grade USVA government. My son put in these classes out of sequence, and I constantly ask him to be removed, and they did not remove him. It went all the way up to Mr. Mulgrew and still didn't get my son removed from these classes. Well, how do you expect to close the educational gap with minority kids when you constantly put them in classes out of sequence? That's a setup for failure, and my son, just like any other son in this school district, has a right to a educational system that's successful. Thank you very much.
Jalen Wyatt.
Hello, my name is Jalen Wyatt. My address is on file. It started as freshman year, before the freshman year actually started, it was about the second Saturday or Friday of August in 2016, and after football practice had ended at Potomac...
After you're speaking in the mic?
Okay. After practice had ended at Potomac High School the second Saturday in August, all the freshmen were held down by the seniors and juniors and beaten with helmets, and nothing was done about it. My mom and other parents had emailed Mr. Mulgrew about it, and the behavior was allowed and continued to linger around. That's all I got to say.
Anita Cooper.
Good evening, school board. I just wanted you guys to meet the person that I'll be talking to tonight, and this is my granddaughter, Tamari. Say hello. My name is Anita Cooper, the address is 16864 Jet Forest Lane, Woodbridge, Virginia. And I have a couple of questions for the school board, and then I will give a short explanation of why I have these questions, and you guys, if you have answers for me, you can pose them. My first question is, why do parents in Prince William County have to fight to get a quality public education for their special education students? The second question, is there a provision for students that are placed in a classroom have equal number of genders? For example, one girl to all boys, or one boy to all girls? Or should it be equal? So I'm just checking, is there a provision for that? If there is no provision, is there some way that parents are notified that a school child is in a classroom, like my granddaughter, with all boys, being she would be the only girl? Is there also a safety provision that stops teachers from taking a child to the bathroom with male students, allowing them to see male genitalia in kindergarten and special ed? If there is no provision for it, what does the board see as a recommendation to have that changed? Also, is there a provision if a child is kidnapped by a male student in his classroom, in her classroom per se, boarded up and kidnapped in the bathroom by a male student where the teachers cannot get in, in a classroom that only has six students and two faculty? Is there a provision for the board with those teachers who obviously are not maintaining a watchful eye on those students? And is there a provision to transfer your child if your child continues in this dangerous atmosphere to another school, instead of having the child remain in that school and telling them that we need to have a meeting about it instead? Because I removed my granddaughter from the school because I see it as a safety issue with her being in a classroom of all boys who are bigger than her in a special ed classroom. I was then told, or threatened, may I say, that I am going to have CPS called on me if I do not return her back to school. So let me tell you this, my granddaughter has been in school in Prince William County Child Find and in school since she was two years old. I have a plethora of faculty, nurses, doctors, ABA, OT, PT, speech, who will be on my side against your schools. So I would like an answer to the questions that I posed to the board, especially in regards to taking children of different genders to the bathroom together, because my granddaughter, who is autistic, began to model a boy going to the bathroom, and she had to see the boys go to the bathroom several times.
Riley O'Casey.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Walz. My name is Riley O'Casey, my address is on file, and I am the president of the Prince William Education Association. One of the benefits of my job is the opportunity to visit work sites and meet with our members. I have had many, many meaningful conversations this school year, some compliments and some concerns. While we've reached out to the division regarding some concerns brought to our attention as well as those brought forward through the meet and confer process, most of the major concerns could be resolved if Prince William County Schools were adequately funded and changes were made on the state level. On Monday, January 27, the Virginia Education Association will hold its second annual Fund Our Future rally on the steps of the Richmond Capitol. The rally is in conjunction with our annual lobby day. On behalf of the PWA Board of Directors, we would like to invite the members of the school board to attend the rally, as well as Dr. Walz and his staff. I have passed on to Mrs. Urban information about the rally, as well as the 2019, 2020 VEA and PWEA legislative agendas. I encourage each board member to read our priorities as they are very similar to the priorities of this division. January 27 will be historic, and we need you there to stand beside us advocating for our students, because all students matter. All of our students are worth a bus drive to Richmond with your employees and constituents. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the superintendent for not only encouraging administration to allow our members to attend the rally, but for considering joining us as well, right? Okay. We hope the turnout will show that all PWCS employees care about adequate funding. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on the bus. Thank you.
Brandon Holland.
Good evening, everybody. Dr. Brandon Holland, address is 4839 Benicia Lane in Dumfries, 22025, and I am the athletic trainer at Hilton High School, and my colleagues and I are standing in front of you really just to express some gratitude, because some of the recent changes you've made in regards to restructuring our duties have been having some incredible impact on our ability to deliver care to our student athletes. So for those of you who don't know, our job is to take care of injuries of all of our athletes at our high schools, and we have some in middle schools also. So our students are the most valuable asset that we have, and time is probably the most critical commodity that we have to spend in regards to what we can do to protect that asset and improve the value of that asset. And I say that because once time is spent, you can't get it back. It stays gone, there's no refunds, there's no exchanges, there's no returns. So the changes really have allowed us to make better use of our time with caring for the athletes, and so the athletic trainers across the county are reporting, you know, better health, personal health, lower stress levels, higher levels of job satisfaction, so we're very grateful for that. And, but the greatest improvement and the thing that everybody in this room should really be excited about is the change that our students are seeing. So last year, I'll give you a typical day of our, in our life, last year, we would arrive at school between 9:30 and 10 o'clock to prepare for class, to get ready to teach class, and then we would have educational duties from that point until 2:10 when school dismissed. We would wrap up our responsibilities that would bleed over after the bell rang until probably 2:20 or 2:30. From there, we would have to prepare ice and water to go to the practice fields and game fields before kids could go out, and we wouldn't really make it back to our athletic training rooms before 3 o'clock or 3:15 to get ready to treat all of the people who have been waiting to see us for nearly an hour, and they wouldn't make it out into their practices until approximately 3:45, so about 90 minutes after dismissal. This year, with relief from our teaching responsibilities... This year, with relief from our teaching responsibilities, we're able to get ice and water ready before the end of school so that we can have our clinics and training rooms prepared to treat these injuries as soon as the bell rings, so the kids can come in at 2:10 and start getting ready right now, I mean, right away. And so we can essentially start doing those things, and students, instead of getting to practice at 3:45, are now getting there closer to 2:30 or 2:45. So we literally save these students about an hour every day. They get to practice, they have more time with their teams and their coaches, and they're healthier. Our ability to identify and diagnose and treat injuries has improved, especially with concussions. So we're very grateful and we're excited to see where the future is going with our duties as we continue to find ways to improve our use of time. So thank you very, very much for that change, and we're very grateful for it.
Ashley Bush.
Hello. My name is Ashley Bush. My address is 4302 Stone Mountain Court in Dumfries. I am here today because my daughter goes to kindergarten at Patty Elementary School. She started this year on August 26th when school started. She started at four years old. I brought all of her documents coming. Her birthday was actually October 7th, and the school did not notify me until October 30th that she was enrolled in error. I am now being told that she is going to be unenrolled out of kindergarten because of an employee error. So I'm here today asking basically to keep her in school, since she is keeping up with the other children. I have her report cards, I have emails from her teachers stating that she is keeping up with everybody. We are now into November, past 50 days of school, and she's obviously made friends and relationship with her teacher and has continued to, she has not missed a day of school. She absolutely loves school, she goes every day with her older sister. And I just feel like this could be very detrimental to her self-esteem. This is her first impression of how school will be for the rest of her life. And taking her out of school is to no benefit at all, or having her repeat next year an entire first quarter of school. I did have a petition started to see how many people would agree with how I feel about the situation. And yes, as a parent, I do take the fall for not reading all the documents stating that September 30th was the cutoff, and that's my mistake. But ultimately, it is the school that should have told me, hey, she has passed the cutoff, and I would have understood the first week even into school, not an entire two months after school had started. I do have a petition with me that has over 800 signatures on it within 24 hours stating that everyone feels that she should stay in school. She is now five years old, she's only seven days past the cutoff. So I'm just asking for her to stay exactly where she's at in her kindergarten class, and that she should not be punished for an employee error. Thank you.
Jennifer Gilli.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Gilli. My address is on file. There seems to be a misconception in our community regarding the parents who care, and I wanted to try to clear it up for you. Recently, I heard from people in the community that parents keep complaining about Woodbridge and don't appreciate what they already have. This is upsetting to me, because we, as parents, are the ones who can ask for things in the schools that the staff and administrators can't. We were the ones that came to you all three years ago and pointed out that our athletes were getting hurt on our old field due to the conditions. We came to you and told you that the men's room at the field still had a trough in it from the 70s. We brought a list of items that we felt needed to be done for Woodbridge High School, because we saw the differences between high schools in the same county, and we let you all know about them. Parents are the ones who need to speak up for their children and their rights. Principals, staff, teachers have more than enough to do in the seven-plus hours a day of learning, and shouldn't have to be concerned with leaky ceiling tiles, unsafe weight room conditions, poor drainage on the football field, or even the lack of specialty programs at a school. Everyone has a role in the school system, and too many times, issues fall through the cracks because people have complained to the wrong people or filled out the wrong forms. This is supposed to be the forum for parents to come to the School Board and ask for better for our students. When we came to you three years ago with the issues at Woodbridge, many of you commented to us, we never knew there were problems because no one ever said anything. That's because you don't walk the halls in every school in the county, and when you do go into the schools in your districts, I'm sure you were escorted to the nicest office, see the teachers in the best classrooms, see the students with the highest scores, and marvel at the beautiful outdoor playgrounds. We go to the concerts and sit in the auditorium seats, we go to the sporting events and see the wrestlers drag heavy mats up and down flights of stairs after competing, hoping they don't fall. We stand in line and missing the game at the bathrooms in our field because there are five stalls versus 40 at the almost every other high school in the county. I know, we're getting our restrooms next year. Let's be honest, if we hadn't come and pointed this out to you, would we have just played our first season on the new field at Woodbridge? Parents are in the schools for their children, and everyone wants the best for their children. So before we start trying to tell parents to stay out of the schools, let's make the schools better for all the students, so that the parents don't have to point out the issues. Before we think of yet another new high school in the county, you all need to work on a plan to make sure the older high schools are updated first for the students who attend them. Please make sure there is a policy to update older schools before new schools have broken ground. I truly hope that our asking for improvements for older schools is not something that is being held against Woodbridge. I spoke about perception in the past, and I know many perceive that we are being targeted for speaking up for the good of the students. Perception is real, there are many issues flying around now that I would hate to be perceived as being ungrateful for what we have received so far. But in retrospect, if I knew then what I know now, I'd choose a coach over the field. Thank you.
Asher McDuffie.
My name is Asher McDuffie. My address is on file. I'm here to address some, as most of you already know, the issues that have been going on at Woodbridge since the summer and recently have affected my son and some of his fellow student athletes at the school. And I also, as a lady earlier stated, have been attempting to have a conversation as a citizen with the Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendent, and been denied. I've sent multiple emails, have heard nothing from either. So I am not happy about that. As a leader of this school system, I feel you need to stand up when it's time to stand up and respond to the citizens when they ask. So moving on from that. So as we note about the notes and things that were sent from a member of the staff to the students, the way this is being handled, to me, with discussions that I've had, is not appropriate. And understanding that there are things that need, I understand it's policies that you have to put in place for employees, that's not the issue for me. But my thing is about being fair about that, because there was another incident with another employee, and that person was sent away for a few weeks while investigation was done. But yet, nothing so far has been shown to be done, and that person is still in the school that has done this. And I guess, I know you know about it already, we don't need to discuss it at this point here. I will happily have a meeting with anyone who wants to have a meeting to discuss it behind closed doors, whatever has to happen. The effect on these kids, though, is what is important to me. When this started in August, my son called me at work crying and upset. This is his senior season, and it got ruined by this mess for all these kids. Every week for the season, they had to deal with this. And nobody in this county stood up, nobody in the leadership stood up and came to the parents to help deal with the situation, explain to us what was going on. Instead, they kept going behind our backs to staff and also to the students themselves. Everything I heard about this was from my son. That is ridiculous. He's 17. He's a child, I should not have heard it from him. I should have heard it from the Principal, I should have heard it from, if not then, the Associate Superintendent of High Schools, if not from him, Mr. Iman or Dr. Waltz. Because this is not a small issue. And as most of you probably know, the issues that are going on next door in Loudoun County that are now all over the news and in court, that's what I do not want to have happen here. I stood before this, when the field was being done, I stood before this board and said, let's lead, instead of following down behind Loudoun, Fairfax County. And I say it again, I'm asking you as our elected officials, selected officials, to represent us, to stand up, lead, do the right thing, and let's build a better county school system. Thank you.
Swanell Wiggins.
I am Swanell Wiggins. My address is on file. Thank you for affording me the opportunity to speak this evening. When I took public speaking in college, we were always taught to know our audience and speak to the audience with respect. It is clear that Jason Eldridge, Director of Student Activities at Woodbridge Senior High School, does not know or respect his audience. On November 10th, 2019, Eldridge engaged a group of 42 athletes, who are predominantly African, African-American, Latin and Latin-American, of Latin American descent, in a conversation via huddle. In reading the banter between the adult school official and the students, it is clear that Eldridge does not know his audience, as he told the students, quote, "You are all free to return to where you came from. I will be happy to sign those papers. This is getting us nowhere again. I cleared all of you transferring in. You're welcome," end quote. School officials who know and respect students and their cultural backgrounds would realize that telling the aforementioned demographic to go back to where you came from is racially undertoned language. To make matters worse, he also violated the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act by addressing a student directly in the huddle feed about the student's transfer from another school. The parents have sent emails to the school, Human Resources, the Superintendent's offices, and the Superintendent's offices expressing their outrage. We have been told by the Principal, and I quote, "Please know that at no time was there any intention on behalf of Mr. Eldridge for those comments to refer to anything more than the subject at hand," which was regarding student transfer requests. Even after all of this, the Director of Student Activities offended a student of Bolivian descent in a student leadership class. The student thought Eldridge said something about Bolivia and asked, what does Bolivia have to do with anything? Eldridge replied rudely, "We are in America. I don't know where you think you're at, but we're in America." If our children are to receive a world-class education, the proper adults need to be in place, who will not only teach them, but respect them and their cultures, and not hurt them with mean words. They should not be in, the student should not be in fear of retaliation for speaking up. Please know that the NAACP, National Civil Rights Activists, and news media have been notified and are waiting to see how Prince William County School Board will handle this situation. Thank you.
Mr. Jesse. Richard Jesse.
My name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I want to talk to you about something that happened this summer when the decision was made to move the Aviation Institute Madness Program that was designated for Woodbridge High School, split it up and give part of it to, I believe, Stonewall High School. The problem with that decision was that nobody that made the decision had real knowledge of what the program does and how it worked. The program was designed to give four blocks of training in one year after school at no cost to the students, and these kids, at the end of those four blocks, would have an opportunity to take an FAA certified test, and if they passed, they would be in a position to make approximately 75,000 to 100,000 a year coming out of high school. When you decided, as the people in the school system, to move it out and split it up, it has now turned into a club that will only meet a couple of times a week, and the students in Woodbridge High School, approximately 20 to 25 students, that should have had the opportunity to become certified FAA mechanics, have now been denied that opportunity. So shame on the school system for that. I also want to say, I support the people, and I've said, I think this is my fourth time, that something needs to be done about Woodbridge High School and the situation at Woodbridge High School. The Board Members will tell you, and my wife tells me, I cannot get involved with personnel matters. But the Board has a right and an obligation to request the investigation if they believe something is not happening. I have said it before, I say it again, you need to investigate what's going on at Woodbridge High School and do something about it. It is past time that you do something. So I request that you look at it, deal with it, and not let all this. My understanding now, in addition to what Ms. Wiggins said a few moments ago, that some laws have been broken, and also that some of the, another coach has resigned, I'm not sure of that, but I believe that's the understanding. Thank you.
Angela Jewell.
Good evening, elected members of the Prince William County School Board. My name is Angela Jewell. My residential address is on file. I am here today to speak on behalf of my two children, who currently attend Woodbridge High School. I am also an advocate to the many children that are friends with my children and teammates of my son, Angelo Jewell. I want to talk about Coach Wertham. Four years ago, my son attended, started Woodbridge, and this kid did not see or want to attend college. I told him he was going to college. But when Coach Wertham had my son to try out for the football team, my son began to feel like something and somebody. And to you, it may seem like it's just a sport, but to this kid, who didn't think about anything, it gave him hope. And then when Coach Wertham showed him that he believed in him and took him on travel to other coach, to other schools, to watch how, you know, what it's like to be a member of a football team, my son began to really believe that this is what he could do. Now, as a taxpayer, and I pay a lot of taxes, I mean, a lot, I expect the School Board to step in and help us with this matter, because it is important to the many children that we tell accomplish a whole lot, that they're not torn down by one person. This man has ruined, Jason Eldridge has ruined many kids' lives just this year alone. So we are asking that you help us with this matter. In addition, we really would like for our coach to stay at Woodbridge. This man, Coach Wertham, I don't want to seem like I'm giving him praise, but I'm giving his program praise, because it takes a village to raise these children, and not one parent can do it alone. But when you have people that really believe in, stand for these children, and can reach the children when the parents can't, that's a lot. So please, help us. Thank you.
Nevea Jewell.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nevea Jewell. I'm a freshman at Woodbridge Senior High School. I would like to inform you about how much Coach G and the rest of the coaching staff changed my life. The first time I met Coach G was during training camp, and that was summer of 2018. I didn't know I wanted to be a manager until I saw what a great system he was running. From that point on, I knew I wanted to be a manager for the next four years of my life. When I officially got to high school, I was nervous, just as any normal freshman would be. But as soon as I stepped in Coach G's office, he reminded me it was, it was what you make it. If it's one thing I've learned from this season and amazing coaching staff, is that God put His strongest soldiers through the stur- through the worst storms. With that being said, I am not the, I'm not the only student that Coach G impacted. I also speak on my brother's behalf. Coach G and his staff showed him how to be a man. Although my brother and I have a great deal of role models in our lives, Coach G will always have a special place in our heart, no matter how successful we are in life. Ladies and gentlemen, if that doesn't show you what a good coach he is, I don't know what does. Thank you for your time, and thank you, coaches. Thank you for your time, and thank you, coaches. I love you all.
Good evening. My name is Kingsley Wiafi, and my address is on file. I'm here to speak on my relationship with Coach Gary Wertham, commonly known as Coach G. Coach G. is more than an athletic coach, he's a life coach. I was first introduced to him my junior year at Woodbridge High School in 2003, 2004. I was a student athlete playing both football and basketball. I quit basketball after a disagreement with one of my coaches. Coach G. pulled me into his office, at the time he was a truancy officer, and spoke to me at length about the situation and my decision. He encouraged me to see things differently and taught me the value of patience and persistence, essentially to not get in the habit of quitting or giving up when challenges arise. Coach G. taught me to believe in myself. He played an integral role, integral role, in helping me to turn my life around. Prior to going to college, I would say around 10th grade, I really didn't have any real aspirations or any direction. So I would say, meeting Coach G., he definitely helped me to get things in focus. And I would say, if it wasn't for him, I likely would not have gone to college, and as he personally ushered me and my family to Hampton University. So I am a proud graduate of Hampton University, 2009. Because of his positive example and influence in my life, I also work with young people, at-risk youth, passing on wisdom and providing guidance as a probation counselor at Fairfax County Juvenile Attention, as well as Prince William County Juvenile Attention. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is James Gillespie. Address is on file. My name is James Gillespie. I am 11th grader at Woodbridge Senior High School. I have been blessed to be a four-star recruit. My football abilities has caught the attention of many prestigious universities across the country. This has allowed me to travel from state to state with my family and represent Woodbridge, as well as Prince William County area. I am forever grateful for the opportunity being, being presented to myself. With that being said, I feel that Mr. Eldridge is trying to sabotage my recruitment. He has deliberately taken the action of blocking and restricting access to the team's film. This action has made it difficult for my teammates to not use all our resources in furthering our college recruitment. Mr. Eldridge has also been defying, to my parents' direct request, he is, he is not to be involved in any process of my college recruitment slash transcript request. He has been sending my transcript to universities without acknowledging my parents. As stated before, he is not to be involved with, with this process. I have been working closely with former head coach Wertham, with him and his staff. We have built personal relationship with college coaches across the nation. This past weekend, I attended the LSU-Alabama game on the campus visit. I met with Alabama coaches Nick Saban and Huff. They requested an updated game film to possibly extend an offer to play for them. Coach Wertham and I were unable to do so, do so because Mr. Eldridge's strict restrictions. My, my family and I traveled 12 hours by car with our own means. It is devastating knowing a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity could be lost through someone else unfortunate actions. I don't understand why we, the students and our parents, are being subjected to this behavior. These opportunities are much bigger than a sport. Some of us have, have, have the chance to change our, our lives and has dreams of these aspirations for as long as we can remember. It was my desire to be, to become an astrologist after playing my career. The blessings of receiving a full scholarship will help me reach this desire, and this means Coach Wertham is continuously helping the team with furthering their education. He has many of us taking SAT and ACT tutoring sessions in his limited role. He has continuously been a leader and a role model. Cecilia James Gillespie.
Jasmine, excuse me for saying, Shepalk?
Shepalk. Good evening, board members. My name is Jasmine Shepalk. My address is on file. Edmund Burke states, "Evil prevails when good men do nothing." I know we want to think nothing satanic has happened, but I just heard James Gillespie say that a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity may be blocked because a faculty member decided to not do what was in his best interest, the students' best interest, and allow access to game film. On November 5th, the voters of Prince William County elected not only good men and women, but quote-unquote, "I believe we elected the best men and women in you guys." Our interests are students, student athletes, locally zoned, transfers, C average and below, even failing students, A beyond role students, truant students. All students are our interests. We elected you to take care of our interests. The very least of these, even if they're failing, even if they have C averages, but to Mr. Jason Eldridge, even if they are transfers who successfully went through the process, once they're on the rolls, they're students. They're our students. So when faculty members are appointed, they should have a probationary period. We believe there should be an athletic director, but you have the wrong person in the position of being the athletic director, because he does not look after our interests. He distinguishes, diminishes, transfers, locals, and that shouldn't be. So since the principal seems to have her hands tied, I'm here to ask you to untie them. Since the deputy superintendent seems to have one eye open and one eye shut with his choices, I'm here to ask you to open your eyes and help us. On November 10th, when Jason Eldridge told 42 of the community's interest in student athletes that the transfers can return from where they came, he forgot that those students not only have parents, many who do not talk to our children the way that he did. He forgot that we elected you, many of you, we re-elected you on November 5th, and I want you to remind him that you do what is in our children's best interests.
Hello. My address is on file. Antoine, I hope you put it on file for me. Three minutes to, to talk about something that's unjust, unjust. There's an athletic director who I believe, one day, you're going to have a choice in whether, in a vote, in whether he stays an athletic director at Woodbridge High School or not. And when you make that decision, I want you to keep in mind, and please, from this moment moving forward, do some due diligence and some research on something. We have a coach, Coach Gary Wertham, at Woodbridge High School. I met him before he even got there, by word of mouth. I heard he was an awesome coach and a magnificent man. I kept my, my son at Woodbridge High School because I wanted him to pursue an athletic and a, and a academic achievement from a good school. The moment I met Gary Wertham, Coach Gary Wertham, he told me, and he told my son, he said, "You can only stay in this program when your grades are good. You will not play if your grades are not good. So the one thing I ask you to do is stay humble and make sure your grades are good. When you do that, I will ensure that you're able to go to the next step, and that would be college." And I asked him, "How am I going to be able to afford that?" He said, "I'm going to do everything in my power so all student, all, all colleges get a chance to see if your son is able to go to that college." I work 72 hours a week, and that man and his staff, without the high school's financial backing, has taken my son with my permission and numerous other kids, football members, to colleges throughout this whole area, all the way to Miami and back, with my permission, in his trio, with his money, with a little bit of mind, so that these kids get an opportunity to be seen by colleges. And guess what? A lot of them. And do the due diligence. Look and see who he's gotten D1 scholarships for. They're full-ride college scholarships that I personally know I could not afford. Why did that man quit? How are you going to have a passion like that for everybody, for everything, for especially education, and then quit? When did he quit? After the new athletic director started harassing all of his team members. So you know when he quit? He quit to sacrifice himself so they would leave those people alone so they could still have a job. I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. So that, that will conclude Citizens' time. We'll move on to Superintendent's time.
Thank you, Chairman Latif, and members of the board. It is the Year of the Cat for cheer teams in PWCS at both the Battlefield Bobcats and the Brentsville Tigers, won state championships in Richmond. This year's Class III state title is the third in the span of 12 years for Brentsville District High School Tigers. The cheering Battlefield High School Bobcats have been district champions six times, as well as regional championships for the past two years. But this season's Class VI state title is the first in Battlefield school history. Congratulations to both teams. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the PWCS Nutrition 30th Anniversary Food Show, which included a three-course meal and a final course of blueberry shortcake. I joined attendees in trying a vegetarian breakfast burrito, grandma pie, kick and pasta, and much more. We were given the opportunity to vote on the food, providing feedback to PWCS nutrition staff on future school meals. Adam Russo and his staff did an excellent job with this event, while expanding food options in cafeterias. Qualcomm Inc. has awarded a $10,000 grant to Cedar Point Elementary School to upgrade and extend student access to learning in the Think-A-Bit Tech Lab. Cedar Point was an original recipient of a Tech Lab grant from Qualcomm in 2017. The newest grant will help the Think-A-Bit Lab offer a summer camp in 2020. Kilby Elementary School's Tiger 21 Learning Center is among 310 locations in the country chosen as a NASA Engineering Design Challenge site. The Engineering Design Challenge is a partnership between NASA and U4 Youth, the Department of Education's 21st Century Community Learning Center Program Support Organization. Approximately 25 students in Kilby's Tiger 21 program are part of the after-school club that will work in teams of three to five students to solve a real-world problem facing NASA scientists and aerospace engineers. At the end of the challenge, the Virginia Department of Education will hold an event in which select teams will be chosen to attend the event and present their work to NASA representatives. On Wednesday, October 16th, the county sold $109.1 million in tax-exempt bonds in a competitive sale through the Virginia Public School Authority. The market demonstrated strong demand for the county's high AAA bond rating. The county achieved a record-low true-interest cost of 2.176% over the 20-year series. The new money proceeds will be used for the acquisition and construction of school facilities, including three new schools, six additions, five school renewals, two auxiliary gyms, and two stadium upgrades. I would also like to congratulate and welcome our two new student representatives to the school board, Ben Kim, who you met earlier and heard from tonight, a junior at Stonewall Jackson High School, and Tahira Humidi, a senior from Freedom High School. Congratulations also to Alina, no, Alianna Black, a senior at Hilton High School, who has been selected as the alternate, as well as new members of the Students' Senate. We are looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walts, and forgive me for also not recognizing Tahira Humidi from Freedom High School, senior, who is our other school board rep, and thank you, Dr. Walts, for reminding us. And Alianna Black, I don't think is here tonight, from Hilton High School, is our alternate. Thank you, and we, we really do look forward to working with you. Next, we're going to move to Board Matters, 1801, Adoption New Policy, 340, I'm sorry, 341, Fundraising Activities. First reading, John Wallingford.
Dr. Latif, members of the board, and Dr. Walts. The first policy up for discussion is Policy 341, Fundraising Activities. That is a policy that we're putting in place because we have associated regulations that have no policy. So here we are again with that this evening. The, the associated regulations have minor changes, most of them. The responsibility, the person responsible has changed, and there are some typographical changes, with one exception, and that's Regulation 341 dot 3 dash 3, and that is online solicitations and crowdfunding activities. Thank you.
Any questions? Ms. Satterway to Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Mr. Wallingford, this is a comment not only for this policy, but also applies to Policy 3D2 and Policy 810 that I pulled off consent so we can discuss it, but it's referenced in the justification form, as you just mentioned, that there are several regulations that will be tied to this policy that's supposed to tie them all together. Usually, we have the regulations attached with, so we can look them over and see what the policy is referring to, and in these three cases, we don't have the regulations attached for us to view what the changes are. And so my request is, could you please make those available to us before we have the vote next time so that we can see what this policy that we're passing clearly refers to? So I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Satterway. Mr. Trenum.
That was my comment exactly.
Any other questions? Same comment, same comment? Okay. Mr. Wallingford, thank you so much. 1802, that's you again.
Yes, sir. Policy, excuse me, Policy 382, Employee Reimbursement. Again, this is a policy for a regulation that had none previously, so we're adding that, or we're proposing that new policy. There are, in the associated regulation, again, some typographical changes, some, the change of the responsibility, the, the person responsible for the regulation. And there is one substantial change that I would like to mention here, and that is that, as a result of new federal regulations, we have changed reimbursements, how reimbursements for hotels take place. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
I think especially on this one, because it says that work-related business expenses shall be reimbursed, and I think if we had the reg, we could really, it could be eye-to-eye and explain a little bit more, so if you could do that for me, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Deutsch.
Mr. Chairman, can you walk us through what's changed about reimbursements for hotels?
I'm sorry?
You said that per federal regulations, reimbursements for hotels have changed.
So for federal, the GAO sets out a, a list for different cities of how much you can be reimbursed, okay? New federal regulations require that we not exceed 150% of that amount. If we do exceed 150% of that amount for any given reimbursement, the employee who's seeking that reimbursement has to do research and prove that that locality, San Francisco, for example, that locality actually exceeds... example, that locality actually exceeds, or that their expense fairly exceeds that 150%.
Awesome. And then the other question, what's the reimbursement for restaurant tips at right now?
That is one of the issues that's addressed. Reimbursement in the old regulation was at 15%. Now it's as high as 20%.
It's about time.
And it's dictated by a notice that goes out on an annual basis.
Awesome.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams.
Maybe if it would be possible, if we could get a copy of the federal regulations so that board members could understand that this comes from the federal government and we're following policies and the school division and also the members of the public in case they're interested. We have that information available to them, and they're not thinking it's just a school board issue or something that is unique to school reimbursement, but we're maintaining compliance with everyone else's reimbursement policies.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, any further questions? We'll go to 1803 Facilities Planning. Mr. Chiroki.
This change just brings our practice, makes it consistent with what we have been following in recent years. So again, if... you know, I think that the premise has been, if you would like to see the regulations, we can provide those as well so that you can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chiroki, you just said that you could provide the regulations for us, which I greatly appreciate. So do we put off this vote to the next meeting so that we can look at those regulations before we vote? I would suggest that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection, can we get the information, everyone? There's no deadline on this, is there, Mr. Chiroki?
There's not.
Okay, fine. So, excellent. 1804, which is the report to the school board on the county joint CIP. I'm going to defer to Ms. Williams, and without objection, she did not have a meeting to report on, but she'd like to report on the gifted... I'm sorry, the Governor's School meeting, if there's no objection. Okay, great. Quick update by Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to acknowledge that the Governor's School now has a new chair coming from Manassas City Schools. It's a position that's rotated every year. It was an honor for me to serve as chair last year and in the past. I just wanted to make recognition that the School... Governor's School year 2019 through 2020 is the 10th year anniversary of the Governor's School at Innovation Park. We just recently went through a Department of Education review. We are expecting favorable report from that review. We are probably... can't say officially until the report comes back, but the most diverse Governor's School in the entire state. Our student body is amazing, and it's definitely something that, as a school division, we should be exceptionally proud to be a part of. We have the most students enrolled because we're the largest county. We have about 88 seats. We are at full capacity with 111 students this year and a waitlist. So that goes to show all of the work of the people who have gone before me in making this Governor's School such a success. And I believe that, you know, we should take a minute, and we have a chance, to honor those individuals because it was quite an undertaking by previous board members, the support of this board, and also our surrounding counties. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Alumni Day will be on December 20th. There's going to be lots of different events, and there'll be a celebration for that. And then as well, on 12:30 will be the next Governor's School Board Joint Meeting. And also, the last update on that is that there is talk to expand the Governor's School in the future to include possibly engineering tracks. And we are receiving favorable comments from Mason at this time as they continue to expand their campus at Innovation Park. So stay tuned for good things in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Next, we'll move on to Board Matters, and I can't remember where we started last time, but this... how about we start with Mr. Deutsch? Is that okay? Mr. Deutsch.
Sure. We started here last time, and it's all cool. Thanksgiving is coming up next week, so everybody enjoy time with family, enjoy celebrating the many things that we have to be thankful for. It's always a great time for reflection and hopefully rest and relaxation. Just one shout-out for one of my favorite events of the year that's coming up. December 3rd at the Hilton Performing Arts Center is the annual Messiah Sing-Along presented by Osborne Park High School, also done in conjunction with Patriot and Brentsville High Schools. It's a full orchestra, full choir, wonderful time as we get ready for the Advent season. So come on out and support some incredible schools at a great county facility.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to first start by saying I apologize for not being at the last school board meeting. My youngest son had surgery, and I think I want to thank just Mr. Wilk for speaking on my behalf. I appreciate that. Since that time, he's recovered just fine. Since that time, I was able to attend a Saturday field trip. I think there should be a picture somewhere... there we go. So Kilby Elementary School has the 21st Century Learning Grant. I was able to attend a teacher expedition this past weekend with them. We went to the Udhar Hazy Space Museum in Shantili, and were able to learn all about being an aircraft control... aircraft controller, a little bit about aviation. There was a lot of discussion on how many tracks in aviation are careers in the future for our students. It was really an awesome experience to be able to spend time with our teachers and see the front lines of what they experienced and how they can take an educational field trip and translate that back into workable lessons for their students in the classroom. I don't often get the opportunity to do those things, so I'm very grateful for the invite. I'm also very grateful to the Flying Classroom, which was part of what sponsored this field trip. And there'll be more news in the future about all the wonderful things that they are doing with this grant over at Kilby. And again, thank you to Ms. Sarah Plum... Ms. Plum, before I chop her name up horribly, for inviting me and for the administrative staff. It was just a very awesome experience, and I learned a lot. And math and science are definitely everywhere. After that, I was... have to apologize because I had said that I would attend a signing event for a bowling student, Ms. Brooke Driver, at Woodbridge Bowl America on Saturday. I had the dates incorrect, so I deeply apologize, Ms. Driver, for missing that. Those type of events are near and dear to my heart, and I unfortunately got the date confused. But Ms. Brooke Driver, a student who's a Garfield High School student, had an early signing with the University of Maryland Eastern Shore for a full-ride scholarship as a bowling student, which is just awesome. I'm a horrible bowler, and I think this is the second year I've been made aware of students leaving our school division on a full ride, and that is just an absolutely amazing feat. And I just wanted to make sure that I took the time out to mention her because that is just... it's just beyond amazing to me, and formally apologize for missing the event. Also, I just wanted to again remind everyone that I am so thankful that we have students on the board. It just brings joy to my heart. I hope that, you know, we will continue this in the future, and I'm excited about the Student Senate, and I hope that that also continues in the future. But I just want to remind the board that you did vote to continue to keep the GPA at 2.5, and I hope that we are considering our special education students or a way to make them feel that they can participate in this activity, and any student, really, who may be having an off year, that now makes them eligible. There are many colleges that, you know, don't require 2.5 to get in, and it's not about how smart you are, it's about how well you can represent your student body. So I just want to remind the board, I was a little disappointed by that decision, but I respect the decision, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Jesse.
Good evening. I will try to stay within the time limit. First of all, I attended the Human Rights... no, the Human Rights Student Leadership Council orientation last night, and that was a wonderful event. There was representatives from all the high schools there. And Carol Custard, I think you made... Dr. Walts, you've made her a representative for us, and she did a wonderful job last night. Also, I was at Woodbridge High School with Robotics and Old Bridge and one of my other schools, Rockledge was one of the winners, and I think Claywood. Am I right about that? I couldn't find it on the... I think Claywood was also one of the winners. My evening is just so very emotional for me, and I hope you will give me the decency and time to say what I need to say because I know that I cannot get myself involved in personnel matters, and I know I cannot respond to citizens' comments. But I've have... I wrote a tribute to Woodbridge High School, and the theme of this tribute is, I want my school back. There were people in this room last... at the last board meeting, they're coming tonight, they just want their school back. I'm the proud school board representative for the Okaquan District and consequently represent Woodbridge High School. Much has been said and written about this school, but I want to share my view of some of the most professional and dedicated individuals I have had the opportunity to work with. My visits to Woodbridge High School initially were the usual visits. When I go to a school, they say, "Mrs. Jesse's here," and somebody said, "Mrs. Jesse, have her come on back." But not at Woodbridge High School. When I went to Woodbridge High School, someone met me in the parking lot. When Heather Agnew became... Agnew became the principal, she had students meet me in the parking lot. They were usually robotics. I mean, they were part of the ROTC program or some student that she thought she wanted me to meet. When I walked in her office, there were always students there. Mr. Agnew, one of those visits... Mrs. Agnew and Mr. Washington, then the athletic director greeted me in the office and asked me to go on a visit. I'd never gone on a visit at Woodbridge High School, just been to the office, the usual. I was appalled and alarmed at the age facility. For example, there were... there were violations of safety, and Dr. Walts, I think, finally took care of that. Forty-four years this school has been in existence. There were even rooms that did not have... had blackboards and not whiteboards. There were troughs at the athletic facility. Although my husband, Maureen, and he says troughs are not that bad, I'm not sure that most of us would agree with that. I met with parents who care under the direction of several strong women, along with Mrs. Agnew. They outlined 30 prioritized recommendations of facility upgrades needed at the school and the replacement of those urinals and the stadium update. Gary Wertham and George Washington started educating me by inviting me to football fields, also known as the swamp. It was called the swamp for a very good reason because there were holes in the field. In fact, I think it was Mrs. Gillie's son who came to the board and said, "Why do we have to play in the mud?" So we finally got a feel for them. In spite of this, and I think I have a slide that should come up, the boys were the regional champions, and they came into this boardroom. They wore white ties. They were... I hate to use the word articulate because that kind of denotes a certain group of people, but they were articulate. One happened to be one of my students from Vaughn. I'm sorry, but tonight has been very emotional. This field was upgraded because of Gary Wertham. Gary Wertham and his son found another person who could give us an upgraded field, and we started working in August on this. The girls' basketball team won a state championship last year. More importantly, Woodbridge High School is a school of excellence. Parents were and are still not pleased with the physical status and what appears to be a takeover of their school and their, Dr. Walts, in the minds of many, by central office. I am also not pleased that we lost our opportunity to have an aviation course that allowed some of our students to become certified aviation mechanics because of what I consider to be a central office interference in a site-based award. I, for one, welcome parents and communities into this boardroom. You're welcome here. You need to let us know because you're on the ground, you know what happens. But they're asking for central office. They're asking you to give their school back to them. I'm not going to get into the personnel issues because I can't, but when you have this many people... I received a petition for 274 people. Someone has to listen, and I'm asking you to investigate whatever is going on at Woodbridge High School. As a newly-elected school board member for the Okaquan District, I'm asking Dr. Walts, Mr. Iman, to fix what's going on at Woodbridge High School.
I want to order, Mr. Chairman, generally these times expire by a whole lot.
Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Willie Dolch. You won't...
Order, guys, settle down. Ms. Ralston, next. Just go, Ms. Ralston.
Thank you.
There's no questions. Go ahead, Ms. Ralston. It's your Board Matters time.
It's kind of difficult when someone is thinking so strongly on something. And no, I don't like to have to sit here always and listen, but that's part of what we do here. We listen, and we let others... and we let others not just lead the way, but tell us what they think. You are the people. You're sitting there, and you should never, ever be afraid to speak. You know, years and years that went by, people that looked like me had no rights. Let me be the first to tell you, if you've never been told, and I'm sure you have, that if there's something you want to say, stand up and say it. I did have... but let me do what I'm supposed to do right quick here. Anyway, I want to say thank you to the Neapsco District for allowing me to come back for one more term. Garfield High School football team did well here in the area. Had a little twix out of town, but we did well. It's the first time that they had managed to make it all the way. Was a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful day. And I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And I know you haven't forgotten, so you eat up. Eat up, people. Have a great day.
Mr. Trenum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to reiterate a couple of things that Superintendent has already mentioned, the Battlefield and the Brentsville High School cheer teams won the state competition, so congratulations to all our cheer participants there. See, on the football block, see Stonewall Patriot, and for the three Brentsville High Schools, Stonewall Patriot and Brentsville all did... had very good seasons. See, Patriot and Brentsville won their first-round playoff games, and Brentsville has had the second-best season in 21 years, so congratulations, guys. Dr. Walts, I also want to follow up. The other thing you mentioned is the... appreciate the grant for the Think-A-Bit grant for the tech center at Cedar Point Elementary School. That was just getting started when I got back up from Africa, and I think it's a great thing. It's been very successful, and one of the things that I love best about it is that was the brainstorm and idea of one of our teachers in the schools and one of our staff members. So we have lots of smart people out in our schools, and they have lots of great ideas, and I'm just glad that we are supportive of that. And so, along that note... oh, I need to update this right here.
We've got one more.
One more.
Standing, Mr. Trenum. Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to congratulate our Battlefield High School cheerleaders on their state championship. That is very exciting. They are amazing to watch. Also, our volleyball team. I want to congratulate them for a wonderful, outstanding season that ended tonight in the state semifinals. Congratulate them on how well they have done this season. So recently, I was able to attend Veterans Day programs at Gravely Elementary School and Cedar Point Elementary School. Mr. Trenum was at Cedar Point also. I want to thank our schools, and it's not just our Purple Star schools that are doing it, but we have so many schools in Princeville County that are recognizing our military families and on Veterans Day recognizing our veterans. And if you are a veteran here watching, I thank you for your service, and thank your family, too, for their sacrifices. I was able to attend the Fallarama at Battlefield High School, sponsored by the Battlefield High School PTO, last Saturday. The cafeteria and gym were packed with vendors. There were people from as far away as Remington and just all over the area who came out for this craft and vendor show. I also saw Ms. Wall there, our Gainesville District School Board Member-elect. Great to see her there. And I also want to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving. And Mr. Kim, welcome to the dais.
Mr. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to recognize a couple of events. I had the pleasure last Friday of attending Forest Park and speaking to Ms. Shannon Garrity's government class. That was a fun event. And also participating on the Recycling Day, great program that was there. I attended a RAP culminating event by the Committee of 100 Black Women, a great program from my dear friend, Ms. Alice Howard, and her team of implementing a great program from student leadership, social and emotional learning. Mr. Bixby attended the event with me. That was a couple nights ago. That was a great event and a great showcase of the work we're doing there. I had the pleasure of attending the Bright Care Center Thanksgiving Gala. This is an outstanding program that supports our special needs students after they transition out of our school system. It is a compelling fact that right now, I believe we have one of these in Prince William County, as opposed to multiple in Fairfax and Loudon. I'm excited to work with newly elected Potomac Supervisor Andrea Bailey, who made it a platform and a pledge to help support our special needs families with these programs for when our students phase out of our school system. As Ms. Satterwhite said, I want to echo the support of our military families. There are 7,500 families associated in Prince William County to the military. I had the pleasure on Veterans, on our celebration of Veterans Day a couple Fridays ago. Montclair Elementary had a great Veterans event for their lunch, where kids got to bring in their grandparents or parents and have lunch. And I also attended, at the end of the day, Ashland Elementary has their annual Veterans Day ceremony. It was very compelling when they asked the kids in the audience, every kid to raise their hand who has one of their parents or both who serve, and it was like three fourths the room. Very compelling. It's an honor to serve Ashland and all of our schools, but Ashland has a very large military population. You see that directly when you go to that event. Great programs there. Also had the pleasure of attending the first LEGO League Robotics Tournament a couple Saturdays ago. Prince William County does lead the way in our robotics programs, and it's districts all over the country come and see our world-class robotics programs, and it was definitely on display there with our elementary kids. So in closing, again, I want to say I am thankful for the residents of the Potomac District for overwhelmingly re-electing me to the Prince William County School Board. And I'm very thankful for that, and I want to wish our families a happy Thanksgiving, and looking forward to December and then the new year.
Well, thank you all. I'd like to first thank all the, you know, I get a ton of emails, and a lot of them come from the PTOs from around the county. We have a lot of PTOs, 99 schools. They arrange breakfast lunches for our teachers on teacher workday. They arrange fall festivals and wonderful art nights and programs for our students throughout the county, book fairs. And so I can't thank our parents enough, and our teachers who participate in the PTOs and the PTAs across the division, who make our school system a lot better. I'd like to thank the NAACP for having their Freedom Fund banquet this past weekend. I was a guest there. I'm also a member. Enjoyed being there. I want to thank the school division, who sent one of the large contingents to the dinner with Bill Bixby and many of our middle school principals for coming. It was an outstanding event, and Jarson Hart. And so I want to thank you all for coming. It was a fabulous event, which honored the youth. This year's theme was honoring our youth, which works really well with what we do here. Lastly, congratulations to our cheerleading teams at Battlefield and Brentsville, to our football teams who made the playoffs, who've advanced, and to Stonewall, who didn't advance, for having a wonderful season. As Mr. Trenum pointed out, Brentsville Patriot and Freedom are still in the game. Is that correct?
That's right.
Did I miss anybody? And I think Freedom is gonna, Freedom plays Colonial Forge this week, is that right? Or is it Patriot? Patriot plays Colonial Forge. One of them does, yeah. It's a big game. All right, anyways, and congratulations to all our teams who are in our fall sports, making it through the playoffs, and for their success this season. And even if they didn't, they provide a wonderful avenue for our students to learn and participate. Lastly, and I said that already, but Dr. Waltz, congratulations. John Wallingford, congratulations. We put out a bond, which, you know, kind of is along those boring topics in a school board meeting, but it's 109 million? 105 million, which was it? 109 million, 2.176%, which is a record for a 20-year bond put out, at least in our school division, and maybe statewide, correct?
It's the lowest ever.
It's the lowest ever. And, and so this bond, I'd like to reiterate, will go to funding, construction for three schools, six additions, two auxiliary gyms, two stadium upgrades, and five something. What was the five something, Dr. Waltz? All right. Wallingford? All right, don't worry. Anyways, it's very exciting. These are important things that, our county has a triple A bond rating. School Division participates in keeping that triple A bond rating, triple A, and also responsibly spending the money. And we're working hard to, all of this money will help reduce class sizes and go towards the projects we need to do to upgrade. Yes, sir?
Five school renewals.
Five school renewals, right, right, right. Excellent. Thank you, sir. Have a wonderful evening. Happy Thanksgiving.